Plagued agents to the flag of the United States of America. A true republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All this meeting, Westboro City Council order, roll call please.
Crowner.
Here.
Rowley.
Here.
Stewart.
Here.
Lee's.
Here.
West.
Here.
To perfect and prove the agenda.
Well, so moved.
Motion for support, no discussion. Roll call.
Rowley.
Aye.
Stewart.
Aye.
Lee's.
Aye.
West.
Aye.
Crowner.
Aye.
Carrie, consent agenda.
Motion to approve is presented tonight.
Support.
Motion with support to approve consent agenda items one through fifteen, which are the minutes of regular city council meeting on May fifteenth, two thousand and thirteen. Approved the board of adjustment minutes for variance at four oh one Ballard. Approved cigarette permit for M and K Minimart, Casey's General Store and Walmart. Approved liquor license renewal for All-Star Made Ride Diner. Approved liquor license renewal for Casey's General Store. Approved liquor license renewal for Walmart. Approved fireworks permit for Leroy Johnson. Approved outdoor service license for the Broadway Group. Approved payment to Southeast Iowa Regional Planning Commission. Approved payment to Francis Pump and Well Service. Approved payment to ACO. Approved payment to Musical Supply Incorporated. Approved payment to Burlington Public Library. Approved payment to Diamond Vogel. And approved claims in the list as presented in the amount of one hundred and eighty-eight thousand, three hundred and fifty-nine dollars and ninety-four cents. Now breaks down to general fund, eighty-three thousand, two hundred and ninety-nine dollars and twenty-eight cents. Road use tax, six thousand, six hundred and fifty-one dollars and thirty-one cents. Tax increment financing, fifteen thousand. Public Works Building, forty-two thousand, one hundred and sixty dollars. Water, seventeen thousand, three hundred and forty-one dollars and seven cents. Beaverdale Escrow, three thousand, three hundred and thirty-two dollars and twenty-seven cents. Sewer, twelve thousand, one hundred and fourteen dollars and fifty-six cents. Risk management self-insurance, six thousand, one hundred and sixty-two dollars and seven cents. Flex account, four hundred and twenty-one dollars and sixty-six cents. Fourth of July celebration, one thousand, five hundred and eighty-three dollars and seventy-two cents. And Pink Heels Tour, two hundred and ninety-four dollars. Any discussion? Roll call.
Stewart.
Aye.
Lee's.
Aye.
West.
Aye.
Crowner.
Aye.
Rowley.
Aye.
Motion Carrie, doing the committee reports, finance, running.
Oh, just a couple of quick things, I guess, not necessarily on finance, but more on Fourth of July. I had Kelly put one of these schedule of events at each one of your places at the table. Hopefully, I'm wanting to start advertising this. I just thought I'd show it to you all, see if you had any problems or issues or changes you needed made to it. If so, please tell me, your Kelly, this evening if possible, but otherwise, that's kind of our schedule for the Fourth of July. You can see it starts at six-thirty a.m. and ends about eleven-thirty p.m., which is pretty normal of what we do. Hopefully, next meeting, we're going to have Brad play a little two-minute clip of the band we're bringing in, the Breakfast Club Band, but we couldn't quite get that figured out on late notice. So hopefully, next meeting, we'll just play that for you. They're a pretty rockin' eighties band that I think will get you kind of excited and get you in a good mood, so. Other than that, we're just working on the Fourth of July, trying to get it ready.
And it is the Dearie Brothers stage, huh?
Yes, it is the Dearie Brothers Outdoor Stage.
But everything for finance. Couple of things to mention. We had the bid openings today for the public works facility, and there was five bidders. The low bid being by state, West Burlington, three million, two hundred and eighty-one thousand, five hundred and twenty-one dollars. Engineer Dave is checking everything out, and we'll proceed from there in a couple of weeks on awarding the bid. The other thing, four lots were auctioned off, middle school this afternoon. Each one of them went for the, with the minimum bid of fifteen thousand dollars. Lot one and two was purchased by Randy Johnson, and lot three and four were purchased by Brian Walrich. But also anything for finance. Streets. I don't have anything, Randy.
Yesterday, Dickinson finished putting the cameras up at the intersection of Gear and Agency, and traffic and transportation hooked everything up, and as of yesterday afternoon, the loops at that intersection are no longer being used, and the cameras are what's controlling that intersection down there, and they appear to be working very well, so hopefully, they'll operate just like Gear and Mount Pleasant, and we won't have any more issues down there. That's it.
And where did the most complaints come from about it? Are these traffic cameras?
There.
Came from the hospital, I mean. Their employees must not like to be late for work.
Wouldn't be.
I have anything for streets. Public safety.
Holy smolies, I got to congratulate the fire department, the police department, and the public works department for the little windstorm that we had come breezing through here. What was it, on Wednesday evening? Thursday, it was on Thursday. Holy smokes. I mean, I got nothing but compliments from, because I live in the area that was most affected. I don't know why. And the neighbors around me, they just said what a great job the police department, fire department was. Apparently, I had a cable down somewhere in my backyard. Of course, I was gone to Des Moines, so I wasn't aware of any of this, and they did a great job, and Randy with his crew coming through with that cute little wood chipper. I'd buy a wood chipper if I could wood chuck a wood and all that stuff, but I mean, I just got nothing but compliments from the area in my neighborhood. Awesome.
Did a good job, and it was kind of localized, kind of kept the one area.
I will say that the neighbors came out and helped us clean up. They were fantastic. I had like five or six hours, and we started picking up some of the trees and come out and help out doing out of the street. It's great, still raining out, and they come right out with umbrellas and help me move, me and Nathan, move some stuff out of the street to open it up.
You got going on then?
Oh, me? Okay, just a quick neighborhood watch update. The backgrounds are done on the block captains. There's seven neighborhood watch kids will be handed out to them the next week or so. Some of the neighborhoods that are covered are North Gear, Swan, Lefler, Pennington, East Houston, Western Pines, Sunset Edition. If anybody else is interested in being a block captain, please give the West Burlington Police Department, talk to Officer Covert, and he'll get you set up for your neighborhood. Sergeant Ryan and Officer Covert, at the end of this month, are going to start working with the principals at this junior, senior high school on implementing the ALIS program in the fall school year. They'll start out with the teachers, go move to the parents, and then move to the children as their plan. Cop on a trade was completed on May twenty-fourth with Burlington Order in Santa Fe. They started from downtown Burlington, made four trips through the crossings. We had no violations in the city of West Burlington. Railroad was grateful, and they showed interest in having another one of those in the fall. I'm not sure, but I think Burlington had a couple stops referenced, people running the train. We've narrowed down the list of, down to two for candidates for the police department position that was vacated by Officer Boner. We'll probably get, hopefully, get the MMPIs back before next session and narrow that down to the person to offer the counsel for the hiring. If that's all I have.
The MMPI's background check?
No, MMPI is a Minnesota multi-phase personality inventory.
Oh, got it.
It's a psychology test that is given, and then the academy will grade that, and we'll get the information back on that test. There's several tests that go in picket and police officer, the post test, physical agility test, MMPI is one of them.
Is that a written thing?
It's a question and answer test, basically on how the officer feels about each different situation. It's a five-hundred-and-sixty-seven question test. So they'll be here for a couple hours tomorrow to recruit. Couple hours doing that test, takes two to three hours depending on the person, so.
Questions like, do you like flowers?
If you could be a flower, what kind of flower would you be?
Questions like we talked a little bit ago, like, police officers have to have patience.
Patience, yes. We all have patience, don't you, folks? To a point.
Okay, Mike's still on vacation, so don't have much to report from the fire department, except they've probably been busy too in the last week. Utilities.
I don't have anything, Randy.
I don't have anything tonight.
Oh, I do want to let everyone know, next Pink Heels meeting is on June twenty-second at ten a.m. fire station.
Anybody have anything for utilities? Sanitation. I don't have anything, but I saw them working like crazy the last couple of days out by Dearie. They get that finished now, or?
They're still working. They should be real close to having that finished up at that West List Station down there. They've got a lot of site works done. The List Station was set yesterday, and they were making their final connections, I think, today, so by the end of the week, unless we get some rain, they should be out of there, and we should be able to close that project out, except for the retainage, so we make sure the grass is growing.
Good. Any else have anything for sanitation? Other staff report. Kelly, you got anything?
Something.
Leslie? Okay. Got a couple of guests from greater Burlington, might as well work you in right now. Pull up two chairs. Have a seat. You can close that computer too, Dave.
Good evening. Good evening, thank you, Mayor, members of the council. David Toyer, the new director for economic development at the Greater Burlington Partnership. Wanted to take this opportunity tonight to come and introduce myself to you. I also wanted to bring to you some information that we bring to you on an annual basis, which is the results of the small business survey. I'm going to turn it over to Sheila, our program director here, in just a minute, but I just wanted to make note of a couple of statistics for the small business survey. Between January and May of this year, we conducted seventy calls on businesses. Thirty-four of those were retail, thirty were service, another six were tourism. We'll do another twenty or so in the fall, and those will target some of the larger manufacturers and such, a little bit different cross-section of the business community. To do this, took seven of our staff, as well as seven volunteers that also helped participate in going along on the calls, and, you know, we get quite a good bit of information, not only in kind of the stuff that you see there in the report that Sheila's handed out, but it's a really good opportunity for us to engage with the various business owners during those interviews and get feedback on things that are issues for them that we can, you know, obviously look at working on to improve the overall business climate in Burlington and West Burlington. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Sheila and let her kind of go through the report.
Thank you, David. As you said, I am Sheila Newman, and I was actually here last year about this time doing the same report. As David said, in the spring, we try to do small businesses, and in the fall, we do manufacturers. And the small businesses are really important to us for a lot of reasons, but some of that is all over the United States. Small businesses employ half of the private sector and pay forty-five percent of the total U.S. private payroll. They also seem to generate sixty to eighty percent of the new jobs in the last decade, so they're an important part of the economy for us to keep our finger on and understand what's happening with them. I was fortunate enough to get to make quite a few of the calls this year, and if you were at the small business breakfast, you'll hear me say the same thing, but what stood out to me this year was there was a lot of pride from these businesses. Pride that they were moving forward, that they had made it through the tough times, and many of them were looking at expanding. Sixty-three percent said they had revenue increases, forty-two percent had increased employment needs, and forty-four percent of those we talked to were looking at expansions, relocation, or adding on. So those were very positive things to be hearing as we go into two thousand and thirteen. If you want to take a look at the first page, you can easily see, we've tried to start tracking this, so you see the trend over the last five years, and we have been doing this report for five years. So it tells you that everything is improving. The one area that we continue to struggle with is area workforce, having the skill sets that we need. We're not alone in that. You will hear this just about anywhere you go across the United States. The lower right-hand corner, I've put in something that Workforce Development put together on the jobs in Iowa and the skill level of the workers, and you can see right away that we have a lot more low-skilled workers than we have jobs for them. And then when you get to the middle skills, that's fifty percent of our jobs, but only thirty-three percent of our workforce has the skills to do that. So we have a big gap there, where we have low-skilled workers and middle-skilled jobs. So that's part of our problem, and one of the areas that is being looked at a great deal by cities, states, education facilities, S C C is looking at this. How do we get these lower-skilled people skilled up to do the jobs that are out there? So that is something that we're...
Sheila, can you give me an example of what a middle?
A middle-skilled job is? A middle-skilled job takes, okay, well, a lower-skilled job is going to be the front counter at McDonald's possibly. A middle-skilled job can be anything from a welder at C and H, an office assistant, so someone who needs skills beyond the very basic.
And training, okay.
They may have, yeah, they may have more than a high school diploma, they don't necessarily have to. They may have some certifications or training beyond that.
Okay.
And then the high skills are actually your higher education jobs. We've taken this information and a PowerPoint out to the county school districts and talked to them about the fact that we have this middle skills gap, and there's a lot of high-paying jobs out there that they just need the right training, the right skill sets, possibly a couple years of education or an apprenticeship to go into these positions. Part of what we tell them is if you look at Iowa, your demand for a four-year degree is thirty-two percent of your population. If we keep pushing all of our students to get a four-year degree, we're going to push them out of Iowa, so you're going to push them out of your communities. And a lot of your schools are seeing this, but they struggle, as do many people, with state laws and state criteria and core classes and things like that. So it is something we're trying to build an awareness of around the community. The second page will show you that we still continue to have a lot of emerging tech-based opportunities. Internet, social media, those were the things we heard the most about this time. People are starting to realize they can use Facebook and some of these types of sites and not pay quite so much for advertising, so if they're on a tight budget, they can start doing some of their own advertising between their website and social media, that type of stuff. So there is a bigger push than ever for social media. Also see there where we're doing some expansions. One of the things we ask each year is, is the legislature doing anything that will benefit you and vice versa, anything that might harm you? We very seldom get positives on legislature doing anything that will help you, although the property tax reform has been mentioned, and of course, there is some movement there, so hopefully, while it may not be as much as they wanted, there will be a little bit of relief on that. The things we heard this year on the negative side was, of course, the healthcare reform, and some of that is still, they don't understand it, but some of it is they're concerned about prices going up for health insurance. The second thing that we heard a lot of this time was concerns about an increase in the minimum wage. So those are the two big areas where people have concerns when it comes to legislative issues. The third page, of course, is the community services, where police, fire, ambulance, healthcare, all those things continue to rate very, very well. The areas that we talked about last year that weren't doing well are the same again this year, concerns about housing, whether it's rental or to buy. There isn't really enough in the median range for people, and there are concerns, obviously, with the fertilizer plant coming in as well. So the other thing on that was desire for rental properties to maybe be better maintained. We did hear quite a bit on that area too, different areas of the cities, so that was some of the key things. What isn't in your report, but we always ask about, is what do you see as the strengths of the Greater Burlington area, and what do you see as the weaknesses? So I'll give you just a real quick rundown on that before I turn this back over to Hans here, but strengths would be quality of life, private business climate, regional shopping hub, loyal customers, the riverfront, small-town feel, and then the weaknesses include low-income jobs, lack of disposable income, declining population, loss of young people, not enough riverfront development, and then lack of skills in the labor pool. So hopefully, you'll take a look at this report, and if you have any questions, feel free to call myself or David at any time, and we'll try to help you get answers.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
For taking the time to come out. Anybody have any questions? Now's time to answer, experts. Ask the ask experts. Thank you. Thank you. I'll open the floor up to anyone wishing to address the council matters that are not on the agenda tonight. Go to new business. Time number one is to consider terms of financing for the proposed public works building project.
Like I say in my memo, this is kind of a policy decision that you guys have to make. We could have a choice between paying less interest over a shorter term and not being able to do many other projects, or extending that out a little bit, giving us some elbow room to do a few more projects, although there isn't a lot there, and paying more interest, and really, I don't have a recommendation, because it's a policy decision you guys need to make. I can go either way with it. It's always good to save money, but on interest, but, you know, sometimes some projects come along too, so.
You don't have a recommendation?
Well, not, I have one recommendation, not six. That's a little bit too tight, but...
How about ten?
Ten would be okay if you want to do more projects.
I've thrown out six and ten in my mind. And then that makes it easy, having two choices instead of four, and I'm just basing it on saving money, because I don't know what those projects would be, but they'd be small. So I got left with, I got left with eight, just because I got nothing else to go off.
Leslie, do you have the numbers?
Yeah.
In the statement, it says, I don't know what I did with it now. Well, this would get us at eighty percent of our bonding capacity, is that correct? Initially, the first year?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think Gifford says that in the memo, but then you say it'll be considerably less the next year, but is there any correlation of numbers there? I mean, what's considerably less?
We are, we're paying off the...
Look at...
In thirteen, fourteen, we're paying on the last, the pool bond. That payment is eight-hundred-and-twenty-three thousand, so it drops significantly, you know, that's a large payment. So that's why, to drop...
You don't know what percent?
Plug in the number real quick. I had those four in one time.
I just thought maybe you had it. I had looked through this looking to see if I could find something, but I couldn't. I mean, considerably less might be ten percent to some people in twenty-five, you know what I'm saying, to some of us. I don't know what...
The reason we didn't look further is because we were trying to keep our, this is all for TIF debt. You'll notice that second page, all the stuff that you got shows what, for each of the different years, what our payment would be, so that was our goal, at least get that under a million dollars of TIF debt each year. And so eighty percent, you know, that's not bad, to be at eighty percent. It's going to drop quite a bit after that, but I, right in front of me, I don't have that.
No problem. No problem, I was just wondering.
Well, the interest difference between six-year and ten-years, two-hundred-and-forty-two-thousand dollars extra in interest.
If we go with the ten-year.
If you go with the ten-year.
It looks like it drops to like eighty to like thirty-three percent. Quite a bit of drop.
Big drop.
Big drop.
Okay.
At the, at the eight-year...
That didn't sound...
I added in that one number, I'm sorry. It would have been eighty-three percent without the add-on.
At the eight-year, between eight and six-years, the interest difference is about...
Sixty-six percent, it drops.
Hundred and, hundred-and-twenty thousand, but your debt service is almost three-hundred-thousand dollars plus.
It drops to sixty-six percent. Hans, you can hear me for that next year.
Mayor, do we need to decide on this tonight? We need to get some bonds issued.
Yeah, we've led a project, and the contractors are wanting to know when they can get started, so the sooner we get the bonds, the sooner we can get them started on that project.
So after that first year, with either a six or a seven year, we would be pretty comfortable? As long as you don't want to do anything else.
Six is going to be a little bit, if you notice, all those are a little bit over a million that we want. Granted, that's a self-imposed million, but that's the reason I don't like six is because we're a little above that. That's more money that we may have to make up somewhere else, so. And then with seven years, we're only under the first year.
Okay, but, so push comes to shove, we've self-imposed ourselves with that million-dollar TIF debt limit, so that we can try to help the general fund and the county and the schools and so on and so forth. Okay, so let's just propose that year two of this deal, no matter which one of these deals we take, year two or three of this deal, something comes along that we think we really need to do. We don't have to still be at that million-dollar limit that we self-impose on ourselves, we could create another million dollars worth of TIF debt real easy, could we not, or not?
We could, but that's going to come at a property tax cost.
Not necessarily. I understand why you say that, but not necessarily. And that's decisions you have to make at the time, is all I'm saying. I mean, I'm just saying, just because, just because it chews up most of our current self-imposed TIF debt, doesn't mean that if a project came along, we couldn't change that scenario ourselves, realizing there's pluses and minuses on various columns, but, and I don't know what the next project would be, other than some streets and intersections that need some work, but... Mount Pleasant Street's been awarded for...
Yeah.
Twenty-sixteen, but...
Yeah. Are you sure sixteen, or is it eighteen? If I was under the pressure of eighteen...
It's eighteen, might be eighteen, eighteen. So there, it's five years off.
And then we all have to pay ten percent of that, I think.
Mm-hmm. Well, I hate to see us get as too much in buying, because even with this public works building, I mean, there's more that goes along with that project to get to where we really want to get to, such as getting rid of our old public works building, and also eventually moving that water tower. I mean, there's more that go along with the whole scope of that project, you know, that we hope to do, so I hate to see us get as too tight, but I guess my thought all along was that if we had to, we didn't have to live with that self-imposed million-dollar limit. Now, yes, that might mean a tax increase, it might not, maybe it means a cut somewhere else. I'm just saying, I think you have some, at least you have some leadway there, you have... So where are you leaning here? I would assume personally, six years for me.
Well, yeah, you and Dan, both Dan's threw out the six right away, and I'm like, oh, okay.
I was looking at the interest. But the six gets us in trouble the very first year that we self-imposed ourselves. Well, not as, well, like you, but you just made the argument that necessarily, because...
Well, I know.
You could sell that stuff up there and use that to pay down some of those bond.
I know. So what stuff, Mayor?
Those, whatever those lots are going to be created from...
Oh, yeah, okay. Well, at six, we're over a million every year, for all six years. At seven, we're only over...
Which is a reason you throw that out.
At, at, at seven, we're only over the first year.
And the reason we did the million dollars is trying to help the general fund. Remember, we project next year for to have that down about three, lower three hundred thousand dollars.
I know.
And adding that down every year.
Which was a good deal, a big deal when we talked about.
And keeping this at a million takes, gets rid of half of that problem we have.
Yeah, I understand. And I don't disagree. What's the difference between six and seven in, in our interest cost?
Fifty-nine thousand, sixty thousand dollars. It can go either way.
Yeah. I don't know what the right answer is but I like the shortest that, that Leslie and Dan think we can do.
I would, I would prefer to go with the shortest amount of time also. Probably with this, probably with the seven year because I don't want to be at the, at the limit for six.
Seven would be the shortest.
Say it again, a little louder?
Seven would be the shortest I would recommend.
I'd bow to that recommendation.
That's fine. I just wanted it to be the shortest it can be.
You know, unless, you know, we find some other funds, you know, it's going to tie us pretty much into projects. Unless, you can always come to a debt service levy if there's a project that you want to do.
Yeah.
It can always be through a debt service levy. It doesn't have to be a good project.
Yeah, and if it's a water, something with the water, you can, we can always do water revenue too. So if, if we would need a water tower right away, we could always fund that, that way and it doesn't affect our debt limit or our property tax levy so.
You can do revenue, you can do revenue bonds with that too.
I'll get some bond people in here and give us some stuff.
Well, you want us to run it at seven then?
I like seven.
I like seven.
Seven.
I like six too but I like seven. Yeah, I understand why not six. It's okay. I understand why not.
Okay, we'll borrow some money.
Okay, that's settled. I'm number two, is consider payment Dorsey Whitney for a amount of two thousand dollars.
Motion to approve.
I'm sorry. Support.
Motion with support. Any discussion? Roll call.
Stewart?
Aye.
Lee's?
Aye.
West?
Aye.
Crowner?
Aye.
Raleigh?
Aye.
She carried. I'm number three is to consider hiring McKenzie Eland to work in the admissions concessions at swimming pool for two thousand thirteen pool season.
Motion approved.
Support.
Motion with support. Any discussion?
Only one thing that isn't really related to this but it's related to the swimming pool and been a constant gripe of some of us. I, I noticed this year in the Hawkeye when they talked about all the various swimming pools in the area, Key, Fort Madison, Minneapolis, whoever, all. And even though because of the weather, it wouldn't have mattered. But it seems really strange that all of them can open for Memorial Weekend and we can't.
I thought the exact same thing.
It, it, it makes me believe it comes down to what we have allowed to be acceptable. And we've accepted that that's okay because every one of them other pools was scheduled to be open Memorial Weekend and we were the only ones. Now, you know, they have all the same issues we have, I would think. But anyway, I just thought it was the time to say it before I forget between now and next year.
Rod, I think you and I have been beating the same old horse.
I know, we've been, I know we have, Hans. You and I have beat that horse and beat that horse that there's no reason we can't be open.
I know.
And that it has to be totally dictated at school. And we've allowed ourselves to be backed into that corner and accepted it. And, and, and like I said, all these other towns, some towns bigger, some towns smaller, they don't have that problem. They tell them kids when they're going to work and when they're not going to work. Anyway, I just had to vent for a minute.
Yeah, I think they're going back to school around the twelfth August.
Fifteen.
Fifteen, eh, close enough. Hey, what's your pleasure here? Roll call?
Yep. Lee's?
Aye.
West?
Aye.
Crowner?
Aye.
Raleigh?
Aye.
Stewart?
Aye.
Motion carried. I'm number four is to consider hiring, hiring land and water vegetation to spray for the weeds at city facilities. Uh, fifteen hundred and ninety-three dollars for the sewer plant and lift stations. A hundred and fifty dollars for the riprap and four hundred and thirty dollars for the parks.
Motion to approve.
Fourth.
Motion with support. Any discussion? Roll call.
West?
Aye.
Crowner?
Aye.
Raleigh?
Aye.
Stewart?
Aye.
Lee's?
Aye.
Motion carried. I'm number five is to consider ammunition purchase for a police department, amount of three thousand one hundred and sixty dollars.
Motion approved.
Support. Motion with support. Any discussion?
Wish I could buy ammunition at cheap.
Roll call.
Crowner?
Aye.
Raleigh?
Aye.
Stewart?
Aye.
Lee's?
Aye.
West?
Aye.
Motion carried. I'm number six is to consider payment Snyder Associates, amount of forty-two thousand one hundred and sixty dollars.
Seems like a lot of money.
Motion approved.
Support.
Motion with support. Any discussion?
Hans, I just wanted to say that how well it went through the planning stages with Dave and his team. We told him pretty much what we wanted. They tried to make it all work and then we went back through and found some stuff that we deleted but the building's what I think the city's going to need for the next twenty years and so far it's been a great project so it's, it's been fun working with Dave and, and his team.
More than that, isn't it?
Huh?
Just twenty?
Longer than that.
There's room to add.
Well, it'd be longer than that but.
Okay. Roll call.
Raleigh?
Aye.
Stewart?
Aye.
Lee's?
Aye.
West?
Aye.
Crowner?
Aye.
Motion carried. I'm number seven is to consider changes to personnel policy. See what in your packet you had them were on page six, section one, increases the employee share in the health insurance premium from seven percent to eight percent on January first, two thousand fourteen, increase the deductibles and out pocket max from three hundred, six hundred to five hundred thousand. On page six, section two, change the language in personnel manual to refer to the collective bargaining agreements for dental insurance benefit for union employees. On page nine, section three, increase the amount of vacation time that can be carried over next year from forty hours to eighty hours. Page ten, sections eight, nine, and ten, change the sick leave language to paid time off. Uh, section five, the changes here clean up the language and reflect the changing of minor sick leave to PTO and keeping major sick leave in place. Section six cleans up the language for transferring vacation leave to serious ill employees. Uh, section twelve is a complete rewrite of travel policy. Policy uses published government per deem rates that are destination specific. It also splits out amounts for each meals which allows the employee to pick up a check for the travel before they leave and not have to worry about keeping track of receipts. Uh, this change decreases the work that the finance office has to do and reduce the number of credit card issued to employees. Page thirty-seven, sections A and B, and is required for FMLA language. If I have a chance to look at all those, any questions?
Motion to approve.
Support.
Motion with support. Any discussion?
Would like to mention that Kara and I and, and Mr. Gifford were at a recent chamber, kind of little round table thing where we had three of us and three people from the city of Burlington and one of the questions, we fielded very few questions by the way, but one of the questions to, to our counterpart was, was concerning this amount of insurance and deductibles. And, and it was very nice to sit there on our side of the table knowing that our people do pay part of their insurance fee and that we did just change the deductible because that wasn't necessarily true with the other folks. And I, I, I kind of enjoyed being on that side of the table, at least for that one item. So, so even though, I mean, we've made great increases in that in the last two or three bargaining years and, and, and even though it might not be as high as some people would like to see it, I, I think we've made great progress in that.
Roll call.
Stewart?
Aye.
Lee's?
Aye.
West?
Aye.
Crowner?
Aye.
Raleigh?
Aye.
Motion carried. I'm number eight is to consider resolution setting salaries for non-use union personnel for fiscal year two thousand thirteen, fourteen.
Motion to approve.
Support.
Motion with support. Any discussion?
Um, yes, I think, um, I'd like to talk about our public works director. Everybody talks about safety but you know, I'm just darn happy when my toilet flushes and I turn on my tap water and I get water, you know? I, it, it just makes me so happy that I can get that done. And I came on this position in ninety-two and I've been here since. And Randy Fry was here way before me. And I think we've overlooked the fact that somewhere along the way, Randy has given his all and then some. And as I calculated the wages that we have proposed, I would like to think that the longevity of Randy Fry, he's been a hundred million years. That somewhere we account for this. I mean, we have the best public works department and Randy says his guys make him look the best. However, I informed him that he's the leader of the band and the maestro should get more money than the drummer or the piano player. And with that thought in mind, I had Leslie run a few numbers for me. And we, we do give Randy a whole whopping six hundred dollars for his grade certificate. But when you've calculated it all out, I think he deserves a little bit more just because for longevity and we can always count on him to get stuff done. If we call out for a fire or a public safety of some nature, Randy's right there with him. And I'm thinking that he needs to be recognized for the service that he's done for our city and for all the effort and work that he does for our town. And I would like to propose that he gets a four and a half percent which would put him at fifty-nine thousand, seven hundred and forty dollars and forty-six cents, which was just only an increase of eight hundred and forty-nine dollars from what we have proposed as a three percent.
An additional eight forty-nine, Teresa?
Yes. Over the fifty-eight, three, sixty-four.
Over a years period.
Sorry.
Dan, on the last meeting you had, or the work session that we had, did you propose a three point five on the?
Me, Dan, or Gifford did?
Me?
Yeah. Did I do what?
Include the billing, uh, were you just directly going to give him a three point five on the forty percent of his wages for fire marshal and fire chief or the total of sixty percent includes in building inspector?
I, I think we give the guy one paycheck I was talking about.
Okay, I thought you were talking about just fire chief.
No. Um, two, two things to talk about here, I guess. The, the public works director and Randy Fry, two separate, two separate things. That Randy, like a lot of our employees, deserves a very public attaboy consistently. Goes above and beyond in, in the middle of the night and always gives the credit to his guys. And way to go Randy. But that position of public works director, I don't have statistics in front of me. I've just, I've made phone calls trying to find out what other similar sized towns pay and of course, job descriptions are different, job duties, job assignments. You just, you, you just can't go to city B and, and compare it with West Burlington directly. But I would, I would say that, uh, that position is, is, is paid less than it should be. Especially when you consider the, the extra, the extra work that he does do for us. So I would go along with, with Teresa, whatever, whatever we got to do to find the money to do that. I'd be, it's, it's not that much. I, I, it's, he's not going to go to Hawaii this year with, with, with that little bit but it, it, it is a very public attaboy when you give somebody a, a raise beyond what others are getting. So I'm all in favor of it. But I guess we've, we've got a motion out there with, with that not on it so.
So do we need to amend?
I will remove my second.
You want to, Rod seconded it and Kara made the motion so Rod, you want to?
I will remove my second.
Remove your second, Kara. You want to amend the motion?
I will amend my emotion to include the suggested increase for the public works director.
Second.
There's motion with support. Any other discussion? Roll call.
Lee's?
Aye.
West?
Aye.
Crowner?
Aye.
Raleigh?
Everybody, yes, except for the fire chief. I don't believe the extra five percent because of the building inspectors. Uh, the other one with Randy is okay even though he suggested three was good. And he does do extra work.
Vote on him. It's one, it's one motion. You got to vote either yes or no.
Oh, okay. No, no.
Stewart?
Aye.
Okay, motion carried. Kelly's going to Hawaii.
And she's going shopping.
Only one of us can go.
Kelly, some days would gladly send Randy anywhere.
Well, I wouldn't think of why.
Are they present in Hawaii?
Yeah, he wouldn't like Hawaii.
Item number nine is to consider resolution saying nominal fee for volunteer firefighters.
Motion to approve.
Support.
Motion with support. Any discussion? Roll call.
West?
Aye.
Crowner?
Aye.
Raleigh?
Aye.
Stewart?
Abstain.
Lee's?
Aye.
Motion carried. I'm number ten is to consider prorated benefits for permanent, permanent part-time employees. Dan's been kicking this around for a couple of years now and I, I wholly agree that the part-time employees should have some type of, of benefits. If it's, you know, just holiday pay or the amount of hours that the work, a person works four hours a day, then they ought to, on a holiday ought to get four hours of holiday pay and somehow be able to also accumulate some type of vacation on, based off of that too.
We recently kicked this around at work, it's been six months ago, with some of our part-time people and we, and we asked our accountant to put together some numbers and, and it was just seat of the pants. How long do you think it is before that new hire is up and being productive? And, and, and the cost of training, of hiring and, and training someone versus the cost of giving some part-time benefits to somebody who's doing a good job for you? It was a no-brainer for us and I, I have to think that's the same thing here. We've got, we've got some, some people that are very experienced in their positions and replacing them and, you know, going out there and hiring somebody and training them. Yeah, I'm all for this. I think it's a good idea. Longevity is a beautiful thing. How long have each of those two people been with us?
How long's Carl been here ever?
Carl's close to three years.
Three years?
Three, two years. Almost two years.
Two years?
A year and a half.
Yeah.
Over a year and a half.
Well, I think the girls have done a good job in there, and so I'd make a motion to go ahead and give the benefits.
Well, but having said that, I would hate to carry this over to the next person that would be coming into that job.
That was going to be my next question.
That's why I have the year lag in built into that, so you don't...
Support, by the way, mayor.
Now discussing.
Now we're discussing.
That's why the year, that's why you have to be here a year before you get it, so we can evaluate that person if they're not working out.
Before any of those things, they have to be here a year?
Yes, and, well, not holidays, probably. Holidays probably don't, but vacation do, but...
When that time comes, you'll have trouble getting that by at least me.
Okay.
I, 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 I think, I think part-time people are still part-time people, and I think you reward good employees, not necessarily the next part-time person that might only be here six months, and you already gave them four holidays.
You could prorate it.
Yeah, there's probably a way to, to do it, I just...
And I think we can do it that way, too, it's, I hadn't really thought about the, the holiday part, though, and, you know, that was one of the things, if we're closed, then, but we do allow them to make that up, and I guess that takes care of that, so.
Well, it kind of does.
I don't have a, a huge heartburn over...
Which is the other reason I'm willing to go along with this, is because our current management style, right or wrong, has been to allow these employees to make up those hours anyhow, so they're really not short those hours. So you're right in your, your memo to us that the cost is going to be very similar is very true, because we don't allow those employees to have short paychecks anyway, because we let them work the extra hours, so. Anyhow, I, I think it's a good reward for, for good part-time employees.
Did you run the numbers on that, Dan?
Yeah, it's, those guys almost make up all their hours, so it costs us literally very, almost nothing. One of them makes up all her hours and always has, and the other one comes very close to making all hers up, so. Very few hour, extra hours. Like Dan's point, um, it takes a lot of training for both of those positions, of running the payroll system and all the accounting and all of that, and, and the police stuff, to get them up to speed to be the police secretary, there's, there's things that, in, in the police department that take some training to keep us out of trouble, so. We've got money in both of those positions, and it's a good thing to try to keep them happy.
Any other discussion? Roll call.
West?
Aye.
Crowner?
Aye.
Raleigh?
Aye.
Stewart?
Aye.
Please?
Aye.
Motion carried. Item number eleven is to consider approving purchase in wheels and tires for the portable stage, amount of two thousand six hundred and twenty-four dollars.
Motion to approve.
Support.
Motion with support, any discussion?
This is just something Randy and I talked about last year, and wasn't quite sure we wanted to take that much money out of our budget, but, with some things that happened to us, and the fact that we don't have to pay as much for fireworks this year as we did last year, uh, we thought maybe this was a good year to get this done, and...
And we got a safe vehicle on the road, too.
Yeah, well, and, and we are, and, and, you know, Mr. Gifford's been renting that stage out more and more all the time, so. I, you know, I fully, uh, think this is a good idea, and, and we got enough money in that account to pay for it, so I think it's an excellent year to get that done.
Is there a motion? Okay. Roll call then.
Crowner?
Aye.
Raleigh?
Aye.
Stewart?
Aye.
Please?
Aye.
Wes?
Aye.
Motion carried. Item number twelve is considered a final reading of an ordinance establishing sewer rates for fiscal year two thousand thirteen, fourteen. Monthly meter usage charge from three seventy-seven to four oh seven, and capital project charge from one fifty to two dollars per user unit.
Motion to approve.
Support.
Motion with support, any discussion? Roll call.
Raleigh?
Aye.
Stewart?
Aye.
Please?
Aye.
Wes?
Aye.
Crowner?
Aye.
Motion carried. Item number thirteen is consider final reading of an ordinance establishing water rates for fiscal year two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen. Monthly distribution charge going from sixteen forty-two to sixteen ninety-two per meter. Uh, the first three thousand, no charge with payment of monthly distribution charge. Three thousand to one million gallon use per month is going from five seventy-seven to five ninety-four per thousand. The next five hundred thousand gallons used per month is going from three seventy to three eighty-one per thousand. All water over a million, five hundred and one thousand, five hundred thousand and one gallons used per month is going from one ninety-one to not, one ninety-seven per thousand. Uh, the monthly distribution charge, like I said, sixteen forty-two to sixteen ninety-two, and, uh, the water service, three thousand to a thousand gallons used per month, five ninety-four per thousand.
Motion approved.
Support.
Motion with support, any discussion? Roll call.
Stewart?
Aye.
Please?
Aye.
West?
Aye.
Crowner?
Aye.
Raleigh?
Aye.
Motion carried. Item number fourteen is to consider the final reading of an ordinance establishing garbage rates for fiscal year two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen. Uh, rates from nine forty-five presently to ten oh five per month.
Motion to approve.
Support.
Motion with support, uh, any discussion?
A ton of service for that amount of money.
I do want to mention that Levine's is, uh, looking at supplying residential customers with, uh, uh, garbage cans that they will pick up at curbside. They're going to try to initiate that program to where they're doing curbside pickup already. They're going to, residential customers will be given a choice, I think, either between a sixty gallon and a ninety gallon can.
So they're buying a truck that'll lift them?
Yeah, they've already got the truck.
They do?
Yeah, they use that, that's all they use in the county and, and city of Danville. So they're...
Excellent.
It's one of the things that they're looking at. Roll call.
Please?
Aye.
West?
Aye.
Crowner?
Aye.
Raleigh?
Aye.
Stewart?
Aye.
Motion carried. Item number fifteen is consider final reading of an ordinance establishing recycling rates for fiscal year two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen. Uh, from three fifteen per month to three twenty-five per residential unit.
Motion to approve.
Support.
Motion with support, any discussion? Roll call.
West?
Aye.
Crowner?
Aye.
Raleigh?
Aye.
Stewart?
Aye.
Please?
Aye.
Motion carried. Item number sixteen is to consider final reading of an ordinance amending chapter fifty-six of the city code pertaining to vicious domestic animals. Everybody had...
Motion to approve.
Support.
Motion with support, any discussion?
Have we ever received any input from the public on this? Has anybody ever said anything?
No. Probably not, laughter goes out there.
I didn't think so.
Roll call.
Crowner?
Aye.
Raleigh?
Aye.
Stewart?
Aye.
Please?
Aye.
Wes?
Aye.
Motion carried. Item number seventeen is consider final reading of an ordinance adding a new chapter to the city code to establish and regulate an animal hearing board.
Motion approved.
Support.
Motion support, any discussion? Roll call.
Raleigh?
Aye.
Stewart?
Aye.
Please?
Aye.
Wes?
Aye.
Crowner?
Aye.
Motion carried. Don't have any old business, anybody have anything they want to bring up?
I heard Rod mention fireworks, is the show going to be longer this year?
Hopefully, it'll be a little longer than last year.
Smart, Ali.
It'll be five minutes.
Smart, Ali.
Instead of three. It should be, it should be one heck of a show according to, uh, Big Jim up at, uh, J and M fireworks place.
Anyone wishing to discuss the council matters we did discuss or didn't discuss tonight, now's your opportunity, chance. All entertained, motion adjourned.
It's all moot.
Support.
All who's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Meeting's adjourned, thank you.
Amen.
I think my cousin from Colorado...